So, I'm going to call the Bastrop City Council to order. We have a quorum present. We have Councilmember Goodall Land's gonna be running late. And Councilmember Madelarosa is possibly not gonna make it at all, but is gonna try for the second half of this meeting. And I will yield to Lisa. Yeah, Leo. Go ahead.
I can drop the mic. I'm calling the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I think we have a quorum. Couple of people are running late, it looks like, but we're good.
Thank you very much. We're here for a joint workshop session between both our bodies who just opened. I want to say that we're not really supposed to go to board committee and commission meeting, that is, the city council. So, it's good to be able to say to members from other boards, especially P&amp;Z who are here tonight, how much we appreciate your work. We all get paid seventy-five or a hundred and fifty dollars a month to do our work here, but y'all have to do it for free. So, we very much appreciate, on behalf of all the citizens, what you do. And you're one of the key boards, of course, but we value and respect all the others in the community, a hundred or so people that participate in making our government work on a volunteer basis. We want to explain what we're gonna do tonight briefly and then turn it over to Mike. We, I'm gonna tell it backwards. We had posted some time ago that we would have a workshop on wastewater and water for the city council. I'm glad we have a bunch of folks here. I hope you will stay for the full meeting because there's nothing more critical for the city right now than our water needs, which you know about, but we're talking tonight mostly about wastewater. It is becoming equally critical for us. So, we had a conversation about some things that were going on on the north side of our community, the area more or less bound by the railroad track, Highway 95, and Piney Creek. We've been giving a lot of attention to that in the last year or so. We have a subdivision that is applied to go in up there. We have been talking about infill for a long time on this council, and I don't think we've ever grappled with it. We've been talking about traffic impact studies in the infill area of the city, which is hard to understand as opposed to subdivisions in the outlying areas because they're all well-planned. But, as you know, nothing in the old part of town's ever been planned in a hundred and eighty-three years. So, it was a good opportunity, I thought, for us to come together with our two boards, or our two groups, and we've invited others as well that are impacted by this. For example, the zoning board of adjustment often has to deal with issues that result from a lack of previous planning. So, tonight's an opportunity for us to hear from Mike and other staff members to give us all together an opportunity to kinda get a handle on some of the things we face. So, first part of this is regarding the infill area, and I will turn it over to Mike.
Mr. Aaron, thank you. The first part of our presentation will be regarding infill. Will be a summary of some various studies and reports commissioned by Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Sean Kilpatrick's here, executive director for BEDC, to give a summary of those reports to the council and planning zone. Andreas is trying to work out our technical.
It's not my fault. It was working on the other computer. The computer wasn't talking to the projector. Andreas is gonna work on that. The council and P&amp;Z should all have something that looks similar to this, which is the slides that, if we can get them up on the screen for the public, we will. If we need to, we can make additional copies. But, basically, back last year this time, the EDC board authorized Robert Charles Lesser Company, as we refer to him, RCL Co., to go out for, to conduct a housing market demand analysis for Bastrop. That report came back to us a few months ago, and we have released that to the public. You can go to our website, under Community Profile, all the way at the bottom, Housing, and you can download the full report, as well as the multifamily demand analysis as well. But, what the housing study tells us, it basically breaks down housing development into three phases. The first being between now and the end of this decade, the first five years, in that Bastrop is an attractive place for both young and mature families, as well as active adults, and looking at market segmentation between a hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty thousand at price point. We'll see a little bit later in the presentation some of the, some of the square footage sizes or lot sizes that were recommended in the report. But, looking at about two hundred and fifty closings annually by the end of this decade, you move out into years five through ten, and the market segmentation still needs to remain in the market, but closings grow to about three hundred and twenty-five annually. And you're looking at the opportunity in attracting possibly some form of active adult community. Within the report, it talks specifically about a highly amenitized active adult community. What we know about the Austin metro market is the community that is filling that need today in that niche in the Austin market will have built out what their final acreage, and there will be some opportunity for another master plan, highly amenitized development, to possibly enter the market. There's a little bit of trend work going on there within home building and within development. Whether or not there's going to be a highly amenitized full development for active adults, it will be determined in the next five years. The trend within active adults is they like being around kids, and so you're not seeing the fifty-five and up age restriction in an entire subdivision. You're seeing it within pods or within sections of the subdivision is more the trend today than it was back when that subdivision and its brothers and sisters around the country were developed. And so, there's a possibility of picking up three hundred additional closings in active adults. We move out past ten years, and the study really tells us is that we're gonna have to continue to have multiple market segments, and that there's gonna be a lot of opportunity within the Bastrop market for single-family housing. In visiting with Melissa, one of the things that we wanted to touch on with P&amp;Z and the city council tonight, and kinda the public, we went out and ran the numbers this week on home affordability, because it's something that a lot of people talk about, but probably don't have a good basis. And we ran these numbers on best-case scenario, which basically means you don't have a lot of debt. And you're going out using FHA on the top part there, and their thirty-one percent housing ratio, which basically means your gross income at thirty-one percent is your maximum housing allowable for an FHA loan, at what we refer to as a ninety-six and a half percent loan or three and a half percent down payment. And so, when you look at two ten-dollar-an-hour jobs at forty hours a week, looking at two hundred and fifty dollars in monthly debt, because your total cap on that is forty-three percent for total debt against your income ratio, you're looking at a monthly payment of about a thousand and seventy-four dollars, and your home affordability is in the low one-hundredths. We also ran that same scenario with five hundred dollars debt on the Bastrop County median income from two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen, and your housing afforded, or your monthly housing ratio was thirteen hundred dollars, and your maximum affordability was a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We ran a third scenario of a city of Bastrop police officer and a BISTD teacher. Assume they're a married couple or a couple living together. We ran them at five years of experience with a thousand dollars of other monthly debt at that same three and a half percent down payment, looking at a monthly ratio of about twenty-four hundred dollars. That is actually a point higher at forty-four percent than the allowable under the FHA at a thousand dollars of other debt, and so that number would actually come down a marginal amount. But, if they have any debt above and beyond a thousand dollars, that also affects their maximum affordability. And so, these are best-case scenarios. You've got A credit, you've got your debt under control. They come in at two hundred and nine thousand. And what you're looking at is young, working professionals that probably have kids or will have kids. They've probably gone to college. They may have college student loans. That's their maximum affordability under the FHA program. And so, I would anticipate that that number would be the maximum affordability, once you ran a real-world scenario, would be significantly less than two hundred and nine thousand. Once we ran those numbers, we decided that we wanted to back into kinda the higher price point numbers, and so we went out there at two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand, and five hundred thousand. Assume that they'd already previously owned a house, and that they were gonna have down payment money and equity they pulled out from the previous sale, and back into what their gross annual incomes under a best-case scenario with no debt. And so, you're looking at a two hundred and fifty thousand in a best-case scenario, needing seventy-four thousand dollars in income, three fifty needing ninety-six thousand annual, and if you're gonna go out and buy a half-million-dollar house with twenty percent down, you're gonna need about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in annual income, and that's your maximum qualifying mortgage payment. And I don't know how your situation is, and I don't know how a lot of people's situation is, but that makes you house-rich and probably cash-flow-poor. And so, you've gotta keep that in mind, that if they don't have any other debt or not any significant debt to knock them out of the qualifying ratios on a conventional mortgage through a lending institution. So, we thought these were interested, interesting numbers outside of the home-building world, outside of the realtor world. Most people don't run into these calculations until they go to buy a house and they find out how much they can afford. But, this is just a simple chart using some real-world examples, and then using some home price examples of kinda where you would need to be to be able to afford these. The interesting thing is the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home on the bottom, perfect scenario, seventy-four thousand in income, and our annual median income in the county is fifty-one thousand. So, there's a disconnect between those two numbers that we hear a lot of within the community of wanting those higher price point houses, yet our median income is significantly less than the affordability on them. So, then we go to the housing study, and we look at the recommendations and strategies, what's called the product matrix. You'll hear our developers visit about this a lot, and where the sweet spot is in the market today for demand, and those are the green Xs in today's. And really, the hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand, any developer or builder that's doing any type of production will tell you, that's a very difficult price point to reach. Your land costs and development costs are so high. Pricing on a house is really a function of the cost of your lot. I am a reformed home builder, for full disclosure. Typically, when I was purchasing and estimating manager for a production builder, we were looking at keeping the lot price to fifteen to twenty percent of the hard cost to construct the house. You get outside of that range, and your qualifying and your appraisal of those projects, they just fall apart. And so, with today's lot prices and all of the functions that go into establishing those, being in that sub-one-fifty range is very, very difficult, but it's also a very desirable product in the market on the demand side. The hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, if you go and study other markets in Austin, that's really the entry market into buying a new home. You're looking at fifty- and fifty-five-foot lots, you're looking at sixty- and sixty-five-foot lots, you're looking at smaller lot sizes, and there's a lot of different reasons for that. Number one, it's development costs, and number two, it's demand from the buyers. Those young families and then also the active adults within the market, the trend within home building is less maintenance, and less maintenance means a smaller yard. They'd rather see more open green space and more public parkland in which they can go enjoy, and somebody else maintains, they're able to mow their grass in an hour or two hours on a Sunday, and they're not spending four to six hours out there in the Texas heat in the middle of July. We do see some demand in the sixty, sixty-five, and sixty-five, seventy-five range, in that two hundred to two hundred and fifty price point. There's a little bit of demand out there in today's market for two fifty to three hundred. When we look at McCon Park and what's going on there, they're gonna fall in the bottom right-hand part of that quadrant, in that two hundred to three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand price point is where they're going to be today. They've got some future product out there that may be at some of the lower price points, but today, they're at the bottom right-hand part of that quadrant. What we're lacking within the market is that one fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand, but we've gotta have market segmentation and various market products, because what we found in the study of the market is not all buyers are alike, and they don't all like the same product. And so, what may attract them to Bastrop, they may come out and find that in one subdivision that attracted them here, it's not the product that they want, they want other options within, within the community. And so, it's the general feeling of the EDC that, you know, we need to have somewhere between four to five active developments in Bastrop that are providing single-family housing, and probably six to seven to eight active builders in the market by the end of the decade, first part of the next decade, providing product across all these price points and have market segmentation, because that's what's going to attract buyers into this market. We were, you may or may not have seen the news release today. We gave a presentation to my board last week, or two weeks ago, on West Bastrop development. We gave a little bit of that belief to some other boards and commissions. I get asked to speak about two to three times a week, so they run together. One of our big fears is the seventy-one, one-thirty corridor. There was an announcement within the last twenty-four hours that Austin Community College has acquired a hundred and twenty-four acres to develop a campus there right off of seventy-one, near the one-thirty corridor. That provides some concern for us, long-term, in some of the development that's going to be going on, because that will be a catalyst project in that region, and now we're gonna be out on the seventy-one corridor east of the airport. There's going to be some development in that area that we're gonna be competing for now that we traditionally have not competed for. The multifamily demand analysis was conducted by Capital Market Research and Charles Highsmith. He's the preeminent researcher in Austin on multifamily demand analysis, very well-respected, does a lot of work for the Austin Apartment Association, does a lot of work for banks and finance institutions, doing market demand analysis on specific projects. But, what we found is kind of interesting, that between now and the end of the decade, we can absorb a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and twenty-five units annually. Generally, when we speak in public, nine hundred to a thousand units by the end of the decade. We've met with almost double-digit developers looking at this market. Currently, within Bastrop, there are two planned developments that are zoned correctly with allocations for multifamily. Outside of that, there would need to be rezoning done on a new development or an existing development, the planned development with a multifamily allocation within it. There is a couple, there is A-Track outside the city limits that's going to be located in a municipal utility district that has the potential to come online as part of that development. So, what that tells you is between our two lots, and there are two sites that are zoned planned development, and the one outside, that's probably somewhere between six and seven hundred units, and we're still four to four hundred or so, three hundred units short by the end of the decade. There is a lot of demand out there in the market. Seven percent of our tenants reside in buildings with ten or more units. The Austin MSA, that average is nearly fifty percent. So, within our market, what Charles considers market-rate apartment complexes, there's six of them with six hundred and four units. They're running about ninety-eight percent occupancy. I can tell you, two of the three complexes that we track in our office, they have waiting lists until late December, early January for move-ins. The third one, as they have openings, they're able to fill them relatively quickly. Two-thirds of our renters live in single-family dwellings, which is a, is significantly higher than most metro markets, and we're, and higher than probably what Bastrop should be, because we're not offering enough multifamily tenants. One of the misconceptions that we hear a lot in our office is the multifamily market-rate apartment complexes, their occupancy levels. So, and typically, in the Austin market, there's about two-point-five-eight, two-point-six residents per unit. A single-family house in the Austin market is about three-point-six. So, there's actually one more occupant in a single-family house than there is in a market-rate apartment complex. We also hear that it's a drain on our school system. Well, the reality is that the new two-hundred-unit apartment complex is gonna be somewhere in the sixteen to twenty million dollar range. It's gonna be appraised on the income approach versus the comparative sale approach, and I'm pretty darn sure adding twelve, fourteen, sixteen million dollars to the school district's appraisal rolls is a benefit to them. And so, market-rate apartment complexes, when done correctly, will provide us housing for those brackets that can afford the single-family house. That's my tie-in back to the chart earlier, by the way. That those guys that are not ready to come out into the market early in their careers can't buy a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar house, it gives them the opportunity, as a young family, to go ahead and move to Bastrop, settle their roots here, and as they move through their life cycle, be part of our community. There's a lot of demand here. We face some challenges in sites. A couple of the sites need, need some infrastructure extended to them, to the boundaries of the site, that we're all gonna have to look at and go, how can we help make these sites buildable today, because the demand's in the market to be able to get them built and to get them occupied. That is my presentation, and I think I stayed under ten minutes. Now, I asked for thirty, and I got ten.
All right. The information in this head, are these things that are gonna happen, we better get ready for them, or are these things we're gonna try to take?
These are things that are in the market, that there's demand, both on the developer's side and the buyer's side. So, if the city was, was willing to undertake them and encourage them, the developers would come, and within the market, the residents, the renters and the buyers are out there and are willing to be here.
As I'm really talking about, you're concerned about, we would be in competition with prospective developments on seventy-one, and I keep referring to zoning, but again, to me, it's more relevant. If none of happens, we need to get ready for it, rather than necessarily taking the position that is good to bring all these people here.
Our concern with the seventy-one and one-thirty, and it's part of our West Bastrop Village, or West Bast, West, West Bastrop development conversation, our retail trade area goes to one-thirty today. With the ACC campus announcement, what I told the, my board, was we probably had a three-to-five-year window before any development in that area really had any significant effect on Bastrop's retail trade area, which is our primary sales, our primary revenue source for the city of Bastrop. With that development, that'll be a catalyst project that actually will create student housing around there, create retail development around there. And our retail trade line that's at one-thirty, our consultant in that business, as well as staff, agree that it's gonna pull back somewhere this side of Cedar Creek, gonna cut off of our hundred and eighty thousand in our shopping territory, the best estimate that we had, a third to a quarter of our shoppers that come to Bastrop today, which is probably the greatest risk we have in our revenue sources of sales tax today, outside of the economy having some type of fluctuation in. So, if we don't grow and core Bastrop, the challenges that we face externally from growth in another region are going to affect the resources and the finances ultimately of the community, which, if we don't get out in front of it in the next three years and continue to get out in front of it, there's devastating financial consequences as we lose shoppers that are gonna be going into that seventy-one, thirty, one-thirty corridor versus coming to Bastrop that traditionally have come here.
We saw just on Monday, Friday, online sales locked in at the playhead of brick-and-mortar.
So, what we're seeing there, online sales don't worry us as much, so basically, sales tax is paid to the nine-digit zip code. So, if you order something online and you have it delivered to your house in Bastrop, Texas, for most online retail sales, the sales tax is collected at the company level, and it's remitted to the controller to the nine-digit level, and it gets back to Bastrop. Now, it does affect local sales and local employment for those. What we're seeing in that business is a trend to move to, especially in the mid-tier retailers, to stores that are more return centers. They're going with smaller footprint stores in which you can, if you don't find it in a store, they can order it for you, or you can order it online, you get it to your house, you decide it doesn't fit, and you're able to return it within your community, and they have the opportunity to recapture that sale from you. And so, within retail, you're seeing more integration between online sales and retail in-store sales. It's not as big a concern as it used to be when sales tax wasn't collected online as readily as it is today. And so, as long as you're, they're getting your nine-digit zip code and they're remitting that sales tax, we're still collecting it even though it's not inside the store here in Bastrop. So, that doesn't concern us as much as it used to. It is still always a concern for those retailers that don't have a physical presence in Texas, because if you have a physical presence in Texas, you have to collect that at the nine-digit zip code level and remit those sales tax.
I'm just wondering, we're a part of the concern about the competition, so how are the two?
Well, what we're seeing is in siding of new retail stores, you're seeing the numbers that they're requiring for their population base, their density, you're seeing those numbers go up. You're seeing casual dining restaurants in the class that we would be working on attracting, those numbers are twenty-five to fifty thousand, moving up to thirty-five thousand to fifty thousand, and so we're gonna see those numbers continue to increase. And we're typically talking about a five-mile radius around Bastrop, not in the city limits. You're gonna see those numbers increase, because they're gonna be looking for increased density, and it doesn't matter if it's a casual dining restaurant or if it's a brick-and-mortar store, they're gonna want more density within their trade area to be able to justify that. One of the interesting ones is always a movie theater. The typical rule of thumb on a movie theater is you're looking for ten thousand residents per screen. And if you can justify ten thousand residents per screen, and you can make the model work with the number of, to be profitable, it's a good deal. If you can't do that, then you're gonna struggle. Any other questions? I'm always willing to come back. Thank y'all.
I think y'all know who I am. The mayor gave me seven minutes, so I've gotta get into high Yankee gear here and get through this, but the mayor asked me to touch on a few components regarding infill development and what it means to a, to a city. And I'm gonna start the presentation out with, and we'll get this put into a presentation map, but all these yellow spots that you see here are spots that people have come in at one time or another to the city to potentially see about developing. Now, some are bigger than others, some may have only put, would wanna put four houses on, some may wanna put more, and even some of these yellow spots are actually platted subdivisions that were never put in. So, that creates another set of problems that will have to be dealt with, because they were platted, but they weren't required by the proper fiscal posting, and they are legally were platted, but they weren't required by the proper fiscal posting, and they are legally recorded law. So, as you can see, there's quite a lot of potential there within the inner core of the city. Why is infill development important? Well, I'm giving it strictly from a city's viewpoint. It's a problem because vacant lots, dilapidated houses, large areas are a place where weeds and rubbish accumulate. They are constantly need to clean up and perpetual maintenance, and normally, the people surrounding them contact the city requesting that they be mowed, that the junk and debris be picked up, and we do try to get in touch with the property owners, but most generally, the property owners live in another state, and filing a complaint in municipal court is nothing less of importance to them, so we end up having to handle that problem. Lots that are targeted for demolitions, especially where we have substandard structure, to be demolished, we get complaints from citizens living next to those types of houses, of kids gathering there in the evening or after school. And if left unaddressed, it will lead to creeping the intensity decay to an unacceptable appearance for the community, and I don't think that's where anybody wants Bastrop to go, especially if we're known as a historic city. Why is it important? One, it helps improve the efficiency of the existing infrastructure. In many cases in this area, the city has replaced old deteriorated infrastructure, and it allows us to utilize that. It will broaden your tax base for all the taxing entities. It will help initiate and enhance efforts to replace and restore existing deteriorating housing stock. And also, it will relieve what we've seen, housing developer pressures in nonincorporated areas having limited development controls, lack of adequate infrastructure and services. And you've seen those areas way out in the county where they just come up overnight, and then you're stuck with having to deal with them. And who benefits from the infill development? Your taxing entities, because most generally, all of these, many of these spots are not paying taxes, they got PAC taxes, and then they go to, someone buys them for a tax sale, then they sit there, and it's just a repetitive cycle. Your utility providers benefit, all of them, because they all have the infrastructure usually going in those areas, serving existing residential homes and businesses. It creates opportunities for homeowners and renters, and you've heard Sean speak of the need for that. The real estate, construction, and lending interest all have a benefit from this, and by improving the appearance of your community, the community as a whole benefits. And that's my seven minutes. I told the mayor I'd keep it to seven minutes.
I'd be glad to answer any questions.
That yellow area is a part of the, this is part of the, that's the one we wrestled with here, and didn't, not sure what we do about something that doesn't fit any of the goals, well, that pretty well adds to a lot of, helping things. Comment on that?
Well, there is existing infrastructure in the area, it's important to follow, and if you'll stay on for the second half of tonight, you're going to see significant dollars coming out, depending water, wastewater service, to growing area with demand, especially when you start leak flooding and pumping out, it's great, quick time to respond, time for your leaks and water and things like that, you don't have that, and many cities actually develop programs to encourage infill development, because our police stations drive here much quicker than you can respond to the problem out here. You start correcting your services, you don't want to bring, occur to leak flooding when you're jumping out, and a pair of turn views, that's a CCM. If you have a CCM in that area, it often makes sense available to that area, and again, it causes a leak flood jumping out away from the city, and then all of a sudden, this area is neglected, and you don't have, it's further than a pipeline zone, so you can plant areas, and everyone can start going down, and then instead of the log circle and the barriers, you can plant the suburbs, that could be a headache, get softened, and something like that.
I don't want to take all the two minutes, but the question, I had, the problem we had there was primarily getting in and out. The only way to get out of there is coming downtown.
That's the next, okay, never mind.
I was just, I think.
I'd like to introduce, this is, I'd like to introduce, this is Trey Gamble. He is a traffic engineer with Alliance Transportation Group, and they are the firm that's helping us prepare our master transportation plan, that's part of our comprehensive plan process. And he was kind enough to come in to talk about traffic impact analyses and what we can expect out of those, and what kind of benefit we gain from acquiring them. I'm going to, hold on. Okay. If anybody doesn't have a copy, I'd be glad to pass one out.
We have lots of copies, actually. As Wesley mentioned, we are, our firm is doing your transportation plan, and I was asked to speak somewhat to the role of the traffic impact analysis, and what it is and what it isn't. The first thing that a traffic impact analysis isn't, is it is not a transportation plan. The two, the two go, work together to help you shape your community and help you achieve what your goals are. But the plan is much more regional in nature, much more long-term in nature, usually the big vision. The traffic impact analysis helps you deal with individual developments, specific intersection improvements, other transportation needs. It's basically intended to help you identify the need for improvements to the transportation system in vicinity of and adjacent to your, whatever development you're considering. And it's geared towards maintaining a satisfactory level of service, an acceptable level of safety. If you have intersections or facilities where you're experiencing a high number of crashes, can help you identify some of those and identify ways to mitigate those. And it's also to address whether or not the access provisions for the proposed development are adequate or appropriate. Level of service, this one is, this slide is in here by request. This is one that was included in, was a public involvement that we did as part of the transportation planning process. But it illustrates, when we talk in terms of level of service, this is what we're referring to. It's a grading scale that addresses traffic congestion and mobility in the area. Level of service A, B, C, and D are typically considered acceptable. Sometimes if you're on the receiving end of D and on the lower end of it, you might not consider it acceptable, but for the purposes of the traffic analysis and evaluating the impacts, level of service D is typically considered acceptable. Level of service E and level of service F are not considered acceptable. So when we're evaluating the impacts from a new development, we look at those levels of service, and if it's in the unacceptable range, then we start looking for ways to mitigate those impacts, through signalization, if it's an unsignalized intersection, through or through lesser levels of control, roundabouts, geometric improvements such as the addition of turn lanes. If you're, if you're looking at a corridor facility, you may be looking at going from a two-lane facility to a four-lane facility. But that's what we're looking at in terms of level of service. Where we, where the analysis shows that it's unacceptable, we start looking for ways to get it back to an acceptable level. The TIA is, the process and the conditions under which the analysis is performed is scoped in consultation with the city staff. And with regard to your codes and policies, city staff takes a look at the size of the development, what the land uses are going to be, how much traffic is going to be generated by the development, and that's used to determine the appropriate study area. A small fast food restaurant is not going to generate impacts at a greater distance as a large development. Picom Park was mentioned earlier, very large development, multi-use, residential, commercial, lot of, lot of trips being generated by that development. That's going to, that's going to result in a much larger study area that needs to be evaluated, whereas a fast food restaurant or a corner convenience store may only need to look in terms of one or two intersections away from that, away from that development. Other things that are taken into consideration in performing the traffic impact analysis and going into the scope, what are the developments in the area? Infill has been mentioned, so, you know, you have a situation where you have existing residential, you have some infill locations, you have, you know, several infill locations. If two or three of those have development that's being planned or being discussed with the city, then if I were responsible for doing a TIA at one of those locations, and there was another one two or three blocks away, I would need to take into account that other development that's not constructed yet, but in order to evaluate the impacts, we need to look at the trips that are being generated, not just by the existing development and the proposed development that we would be analyzing, but also by other developments that are being planned or have already been approved. It would include existing intersections, in the event that there are transit facilities, multi-motor facilities, those would need to be taken into consideration. What would the impacts be? How much of the travel could be offset by using transit services? It takes into account committed and planned roadway improvements. This is where your, the transportation plan and the TIA overlap. Part of your transportation plan is taking a long, a look into the future, kind of a long-distance look and saying, this is where we think we're going to need a corridor to serve future traffic. Number one, is it just a line on a piece of paper that is something that's into the future, or is it something that's more near-term that you have already identified, you have plans in the works, you have funding identified for it, and that would be a committed project? Those projects that are planned or committed but not yet constructed, the TIA also takes those into consideration. What are the impacts of the new development going to have on those planned facilities? How do they help to alleviate the demands from the new project? The growth rates. Growth rates can have a dramatic impact on the, on the scope of the TIA, on the analysis. If you're in an area of town that is, that is not exhibiting a high growth rate, then you don't want to overestimate what that future traffic is going to be due to the background traffic. And typically, the more developed, as you start to, as you start to see an area become built out, those growth rates are more a function of traffic passing through the area rather than development that's going to be occurring within that area. Future analysis here. Is it some, is the development plan for completion a year from now, two years from now? Is it a multi-phase development that's going to take place over the next five, ten, fifteen years? That works with your growth rate to determine what that future background traffic that's not associated with the development is going to have. And then neighborhood sensitivities. Is the development occurring in an area where it's going to have impact on existing neighborhoods? Is it in a new area that's essentially undeveloped, where there aren't any impacts to existing neighborhoods or facilities? Again, back to your, to your issue related to infill development. This is difficult to read on the screen. There is, and it's probably difficult to read in the two per page. There is a larger one, but this is the process, the elements that are involved in the TIA process. It begins with a development plan, that the developer, that the property owner developer has put together what they want to do with that property. It takes into consideration the area land uses, area transportation systems, the development use, the things that we, many of the things we mentioned previously, the existing site, the existing trips, traffic generation, the site trips that are generated by the new site, takes into account your plan and what are your design criteria for your roadway systems. It basically goes through the process from the development phase all the way down to the review and permitting phase. And it's a, it basically defines or outlines what the different steps are and what the different phases are that the traffic impact analysis and evaluation go through in the process of getting from the development to having actually approved and approvals and permits in place. Context and framework for the TIA essentially is looking, starting from existing conditions to set a baseline. What are the highest traffic hours, hours of traffic, peak hours? Usually, a two-hour period in the AM is going to contain, include traffic, especially in residential area, people that are leaving to work in the mornings, then in the afternoons, as they're coming back home. You'll see very dramatic peaks of your traffic patterns in the morning and in the afternoon. Some types of developments will have existing condition traffic that needs to be taken into consideration, that may not fall into the commuter-type peak traffic, if you have schools in an area that dismiss earlier in the afternoon than when people are coming home. That's something that would need to be taken into consideration in the traffic impact analysis. Background study, what is the current state of the roadway system, the intersections and the traffic in the area? And then the TIA is going to look at future conditions. Again, what are the horizon years? Is it a two-year construction timeline, or is it five years for phase one, another five years for phase two, and then ultimate build-out in fifteen years? What are the anticipated or planned off-site changes? Again, those are your committed or planned improvements to your roadway system that are coming out of your transportation plan. The non-site traffic, that's the background developments and the pass-through traffic or growth, normal growth that's going to occur in the area between your existing conditions and your future conditions. And then your site traffic. How is that site traffic that's directly related to the development going to impact your traffic conditions? This graphic, again, a little bit hard to read up here, but this is a little different from the previous one. This is what is actually involved in doing the site impact analysis. It starts with the development plan, goes through the methodology and the scope that have been developed in coordination with city staff, but it goes through an iterative process, identifies the existing conditions, and establishes baselines, and then goes So if you, for existing conditions, everything has an acceptable level of service, and then you put the site traffic on it, you have one or two intersections that have an unacceptable level of service, it's an iterative process of looking at what improvements are needed to address those issues and get the level of service back to an acceptable level. The mitigation again is a, is part of the collaboration with the city, between the developer and the city. In some cases, the city may have specific preferences over what should be improved, what priority improvement should take. The developers typically are more concerned, developments are concerned with what is my fair share of what those improvements need to be. So in some cases, the developer's percentage may be, their impacts may be 10% of the cost of making the needed improvements at an intersection. And they may have, they may have percentages at five or six different intersections, but none of them are 100% the responsibility of the developer. They're not 100% attributed to the site development. So they're just saying, well, you know, write a check for this amount, and then it just sits there. Those improvements don't get made because the funds aren't available for the additional percentages, or other developments aren't in play yet that would be contributing to that. So there's a, there's a back-and-forth process there between the developments and the city trying to establish what's appropriate, is there something we can do? And that is a, that's something that varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. As an example, City of Austin, for many, many years, has just said, what's your percentage? Write us a check. We're going to put it into an account over here, and when we get enough money to go with it, to make those improvements, we'll make those improvements. City of Austin is now beginning to reevaluate that because the money's just sitting in an account they can't get enough to go with it. There's no benefit to having that money sit there. So they're beginning to reconsider, perhaps if a signal is needed at intersection A, and that signal's going to cost $200,000, and the developer has percentages at all of these other locations, but their total participation and impact is $200,000. Maybe it's better to take that money and get that signal put in so that there's some benefit from coming from the, from that contribution that's not, it's not just sitting there in an account. There's benefit to development because they get traffic into and out of their development. There's benefit to the city because there's an improvement that is needed that has been made. But again, that's, that is what turns the TIA into a tool and a process for achieving your goals that you have set out in your transportation plan. Again, the traffic analysis, things we consider are existing conditions and the land uses. Is it a residential area, or is the area residential or non-residential? The traffic in that area, is it local or is it pass-through traffic? That becomes important when you start talking about the growth rate. You have a lot of pass-through traffic on 71, but that's not anything that is going to be something that a development can control or that a development would necessarily have an impact on. Those are developments, and that's growth that's occurring outside your area, but it's still passing through your area. You are having some impacts from it, but nothing that you necessarily have a lot of control. In the future conditions, again, the horizon years, background traffic, growth and other developments. For the site traffic, we typically use Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is three very big volumes that has all different types of land uses in it. On more common uses, it's a very good resource. If you have any specific uses that are not well documented in IT, it may require a specific study done on similar developments in your area. Gymnastics is a good example. We've recently done a traffic impact analysis in an area where a gymnastics facility was going to be part of the development. IT doesn't have good information for gymnastics. So working with the city and with that jurisdiction, he said, well, we've got another facility over here, we'll go and absorb that facility, collect traffic data at that facility, and then we'll apply it here. So again, it's a, it's a collaboration between the developer and the city to determine what is appropriate in terms of the trips and in terms of the development. Trip distribution, residential and non-residential trips have very different distributions. In a residential area, most of your trips are leaving in the morning, coming back in the evenings. For retail development, in a lot of cases, there's very little traffic in the mornings, but you have traffic coming to and from that development in the afternoons as people are getting out, they're shopping on their way home, they're going to shopping. So trip distribution, if you have a mixed-use development, is actually kind of a two-part process. You look at the residential distribution, you look at the non-residential distribution. And that's very site-specific in terms of the transportation plan. The transportation plan doesn't get that specific in looking at trip distribution. It's not like the travel demand model, and it looks at all regional impacts of traffic, all regional distributions of traffic flow in and out of the area and internally within the area, but not at the intersection, not at the site. So that's where the traffic impact analysis again comes in and provides a tool for looking at where those improvements need to be made to get some benefit. Trip assignment is related to the trip distribution. What paths are those trips they're going to and from the site? What roads are they taking? What are the potential impacts on those roads and through those intersections? Again, you start looking at infill development. You have established communities, you have established roads, established neighborhoods. It's not necessarily likely that you're going to want to go in and start widening your local streets, so you need to look at the trip assignment to the development, what are the impacts on those roadways, and what is the appropriate mitigation? In some cases, the appropriate mitigation may be that there's an agreement made with the developer that the land use that they want to put in at that location is not as intense and doesn't generate as many trips. So it's not always a question of can we build more at the intersection, can we widen the roads, can we put a signal in? In some cases, the right answer may be, let's not develop quite the density that was originally planned. Let's minimize the number of trips. Let's make improvements on the demand side, not on the supply side.
I wasn't entirely certain what questions might be asked. I may or may not have addressed any issues, so if you have any questions?
I would ask a question, and I think that if I tell, especially for my peers on planning, so a general resident, three, one lady's direction and, you know, parking, lap, parking map, lap, an acceptable level of service, what kind of volume? And I know there's lots of parameters, but you know, we would ask that. So what kind of volume has an acceptable level of service?
Correct, it depends. In a lot of cases...
Okay, it's right.
500 vehicles a day, you ever take, it depends. Is it a cul-de-sac? Is it a thru facility? Is there, is it a 19, 20-foot right-of-way, or is it a larger collector facility? All of those enter into it. Are there other, are there other parallel facilities? In other words, is it a neighborhood that's on a grid structure or grid layout, or is it in an area where this is the road that serves other local roads and combines around? So there are things you can do to accommodate higher traffic volumes, but you don't want high volumes on a narrow street. Keep those volumes, you want, it's what we refer to as the hierarchy of function, functional classification. Your local streets, your very narrow streets are intended to serve those properties and provide access to those properties, not to provide access through that part of the neighborhood.
Then those local streets lead to a collector.
Lead to collector. The collectors are normally larger, wider cross-section, they have more capacity. The intersections where those intersect with other collectors have a different design also to accommodate the higher traffic volumes and allow more capacity.
And then for every lot, what's the IT generation for a residential home that has three minutes?
It depends on household size, household income. Typically, you're looking at, our tenders for households. But again, in dealing with your transportation plan and the travel demand model, that becomes very, very dependent on your demographics. And again, I'm getting off the topic of the traffic impact analysis, but this kind of addresses your question, how many trips are generated by a particular type of household? Is it a household with a median income of $250,000, three kids, two cars? Or is it a lower median income, one family group, one person living in the household? So it's very dependent on the demographics of the households. That varies by the different areas within the city and what's projected to be in the undeveloped areas.
You talk about that, this is like, you saw what Sean presented to us, so if, when there's an infill development, they have a target price that they're trying to sell, and then you can go right back to that, I would assume that's what you view.
In that sense, what we do for the traffic impact analysis is not as sensitive. The IT trip generation is not as sensitive to the median household income, the household size, the lot size. We deal more with just the number of units. So the number of single-family residential lots, the number of multifamily lots is in a condominium. There's different land uses for those different types of developments, but not anything that gets to the level that the travel demand model does in trying to look at the regional trip generation, where it looks at in-house, whole-size vehicles available and those different parameters, because it's dealing with much larger, any more generalized in a lot of cases. I mean, I know that sounds more specific, but in a lot of ways, it's more generalized because you're having to take into account not just how many trips are being generated, but the types of trips and where they're going to be traveling to. The travel demand model takes into account how many of those trips that are generated by that household, how many of them are work-related trips, how many of them are non-work-related trips? For example, school, shopping, there's a lot of different trip categories that get broken up in the travel demand model and looking at those different household and income demographics that are not taken into consideration in the traffic impact analysis. Yes?
Tony's question raises, raised my, I mean, our biggest fault, we have plenty of zoning, that is, we don't see the traffic impact analysis for a project way down the road, that's traffic. Picom Park would get to see the traffic impact analysis. Is there any way that we make preliminary look to see whether someone like you thinks this development is likely to generate traffic issues? Is there a way to do that in that form through the single loan? So we have to have a decent kind of context.
The mechanism that's in place within the city to do that is the traffic impact And I'll defer to your staff with regard to whether or not they have the latitude to say, you know, we really don't want to wait until this part of the process, we think this one needs to have a TIA as part of the zoning process. Do you all have the latitude to make that requirement part of the zoning process?
We can't require technically until a preliminary plan.
Okay. Is that because of our rules, or is that the state?
That's what our ordinance says.
That's what our ordinance says. But I would also say sometimes in the zoning process, the developer doesn't necessarily have the idea of the number of units or what traffic post-generation will be.
Right. And in a lot of cases, they're not that level to know, I'm going to have this many options. They just know, I want some residential, I want some commercial, I want about this many acres of commercial, this many acres of residential. But depending on what they decide to do for residential, single-family detached has a very different density than the multifamily, obviously. So just saying this many acres of residential still doesn't necessarily get you a number where you can say it's going to generate as much traffic. And in some cases, if the zoning is already, if there's not a zoning change, then it moves straight into the next phase. There is one of the things that I think we've had some discussion, I know I've had discussions with Wesley about, there are some tools out there that would enable the staff to look at, in general terms, not necessarily a development-specific issue, but to be able to look at kind of the overall development in the area and say, you know, if we end up, if development goes in in this area and it generates, we think it's going to generate this many trips, what impacts are those going to have on these intersections? I've shown Wesley one of the tools that we use that is, that's very useful for that type of analysis. And it's not, the travel demand models that we use for the transportation plan require a private expertise because they have to be calibrated, they have to be validated, they have to be tweaked a certain way, or they don't give you good results. This other tool is kind of a bridge between the travel demand model and the actual intersection analysis. For example, we typically use a program called Synchron to do the intersection level analysis. This other tool that I'm talking about allows you to create a network of the major roads for your area and to load traffic onto those roads and route it through the intersection so you can see what, and it's a manual process, and it doesn't automatically distribute the trips on the network as the travel demand model does. So there is a level of manual data manipulation that has to be done as far as making a judgment call on what percentage of the trips are going to use this road, what percentage are going to use this road. But when it gets to the intersection level, it allows you to look at those operational levels of service and get a feel for, you know, if we end up with 10,000 trips coming out of this area, we're going to end up with problems at this intersection. We need to start looking at that ahead of time, we need to be aware of that. And that's independent of a specific development that might be involved.
So the analysis doesn't kill the logic, it tosses out concessions that needs to be made.
The TIA is where you get into the project level. I'm talking about something a little bit broader in scope that is not project-specific that wouldn't, that wouldn't say, you know, now we're going to kill this project. The way it identifies are areas where, as they develop, you would anticipate that if they develop a higher density, you will begin to see issues at some of these locations. So you need to make sure that as the traffic impact analyses are being done, that they recognize that they take those intersections and those facilities into account in the scope for those, for those traffic impact analyses. It's more of a planning tool than an analysis tool at that level. It can also be used for analysis, but when you start getting to the analysis level, that's where you are looking at project-specific. At the level that I'm talking about, I'm talking about more of a general planning tool to be able to see what may be coming down the road before development starts.
What I'm hearing is nothing, none of the tools we're talking about kill the project. I'm reluctant to use other that phrase. What I think the tools will do is allow staff and commission to work with developers to say, listen, this is what we foresee coming, and this is what we need to have a discussion about to ensure we can, for current citizens and people. about to ensure we can keep our product alive or current system exists and people present. No project is killed by these tools, but these tools do, in a sense, to show the project's benefits and advantages rather than a problem that only people can prevent. Exactly. And it's shaped and it's developed to help us to look at the project.
And I think this was been missing in some of the asking sessions.
It's a tool. And as I, the way I've heard it, Wesley heard it, the city wants, it gives you a sandbox to climb into and start, you know, start playing around. Well, it doesn't look like this is going to work. What if we do this?
But we don't have access to the sandbox.
No, no. The sandbox is built in castles.
Yeah, if you said that the sandbox has access to that van?
Or how did you get that? It's one of them.
But no, we don't have access.
It's a software tool, but it's one that's fairly easy to maintain, doesn't require somebody to have, when we hire the staff that we have that run the travel demand models, they've got, you know, they go into training, there's been a lot of, you know, on-the-job training and experience that goes into learning how to develop around those models. This is a tool that is very user-friendly. If you understand how to draw the, to draw lines on a map to put your roads in and how to tell the intersection, I've got two through lanes, a left turn lane and a right turn lane in this direction, and it's all very, very user-friendly, very graphically driven. You pick what you want out of the dropdowns on the screen and it builds the intersection configuration. So, it's very easy to use, but it's a very powerful tool if you apply it correctly.
Yeah, Lisa, I want to say something. Y'all raised a specific question to a general thing that I hope, I'm only speaking for myself on the council, but I hope that our boards, particularly your board, will think about tools that you need and tools that the city needs, whether it's revised ordinance or our staff having equipment or software or whatever it is to do certain things that would help you, that I for one would be very welcoming of hearing that from you. I would love to see you all be more proactive in terms of what you think we need, then we can work with Mike to work with the staff and see if we can get somewhere. But this is a good example of something that I've felt for a long time. And I know we mostly present you with agendas that say, hey, respond to this, but you can certainly generate your own agendas, and I for one am encouraging you and every other board in this city to do that. Also, while I'm got to Mike, I just want to say that one of the things that we've not done, and this is going to follow up with this, we have, we started, we talked a long time about infill, and Mike and his staff, I think, are starting to work on that, but we haven't done a very good planning, the job of planning as well as we should have. And those yellow areas are almost all in the north area of town that I talked about. And I'm expecting to see the old farm-based code that's had a couple of new people added to it, use its creative juices to not talk about farm-based code exactly in the north area, but to take our next kind of troublesome area that's never got planned, just like the area they just finished up with, and to see them come up with some creative ideas about how we can use that area to be a better part of our community following the lines that Mike was talking about, and I hope that they're things that none of us have ever thought about. It's a very creative group. They all said they were willing to continue. I don't know how it got derailed and it's slow-moving, but I understand for Mike that's going to be having a meeting sometime in January, and I expect to see them, you know, moving right along and doing some good work for us in that area of town, because there's nothing tonight that impresses me more than we should have been doing that a long time ago.
Well, and speaking on behalf, I think of the PNC Commission, I'm encouraged by the fact that you're open to allowing PNC to come up with some recommendations for tools, whether it's software or work exchanges. And we might take this up after the first year, but I'm here, I'm interested to see if PNC would be willing to workshop and come up with a list of proposed items that we think might, because we're starting to feel a pinch of growing things. We're seeing, you know, we have one rather large infill development that's really kind of helped and bonded us, and we're kind of hemmed in in the solutions that we have at my home, and to really kind of shape what we'd like to see there. So, I'd like to see maybe if we could workshop some ideas and then present them in council before y'all start working, workshop, figure ideas for the, having to know.
And you might ask for nods or a tab, because I'm only one person.
But I'm encouraged to hear that, though, and I think that would actually, that would be very useful for us as we start to feel a push and pull of development in the town. Is your retreat scheduled yet? Is it scheduled then in January?
We will announce it real soon, for sure. Only Tuesday night. Oh, you're talking about our retreat, our annual retreat. Hopefully, we'll tell, sorry, hopefully, I throw a wrench at it, we're going to make an absolute decision Tuesday night.
I'm just thinking if we're going to do that. Yeah, that's my thought. If we have a tie in there that we can build in a PNC workshop so we can send some ideas to.
Last year after January, for sure. I'll let you know when.
All right. Yeah.
Are there any other questions I can answer? I can't talk to her. I speak to her.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucy, I recall talking about you, you lover the topics, let's do. I think we had, Councilmember, any comments to say to ourselves at PNC? We have plenty of time to talk, but having the luxury of this vibrant present is real gold for us. I hope, well, if you can bring us something, it turns out I'm the only person to think that way, and we've got five people up here that'll tell you what they think, so, and they always do. But regardless, I know, I speak for everybody, how much we appreciate the cooperation we all, the hard work you do that have began this conversation. Now, I have a question for you, Lisa. We're showing time for you to adjourn, but if you all are, if a majority of y'all are, our forums are going to stay here, I'm wondering if we could, for the rest of this, if we could keep y'all open and just keep going, and we'll do our part. Is that, and I'm trying to look behind me to see what JC's saying. Doc, what do you think?
We can certainly open it. The forum, she's saying.
Is that, and then we can close it out later? No, she says no problem. Okay, well, if you see everybody deserving, you can jump in and close it. So, we're going to skip over item, we're quite a while ago, Councilman Gilliland joined us, Mr. Jackson reminds me. Welcome. We knew you were going to be running late, and I'm glad you got here safely. We are going, the city council's going to, are we going to adjourn our workshop session or we just keep it going? We're going to continue in our workshop session, but slip into another matter related to areas of construction, water, infrastructure improvement, wastewater improvement issues that Mike will orchestrate.
About a year. Thank you. Yes, Mayor and members of the council, about a year and a half ago, when we issued bonds for some water, wastewater infrastructure, a small portion of those bonds were set aside to address our wastewater needs, especially in the west, because that is where we're seeing the greatest amount of growth, the greatest amount increased in flow of wastewater coming into the wastewater plant. And so, we began undertaking an evaluation of the area to the west. Just to give you a couple of benchmark items that we have to keep in mind is, under the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality Rules and Regulations, when a municipality's wastewater plant meets a flow rate of 75% capacity, the city must begin designing or taking steps to design, either expand an existing plant or build a new plant. And when you reach 90%, you must have that proposed improvement, whether at an existing side or a new side, commence it under construction, or you will be hit with a fairly significant We're at about 58% capacity currently, so we have a little bit of cushion. But based upon several items, one, because of the wastewater improvements that we have undertaken over the last several years, we've reduced what we call the infiltration into our plant when it rains, and that's a significant factor. And it's kind of ironic, our per capita water use has been going down, and if you look at those charge averaging periodically, you'll see that the water is kind of going out just a little bit per capita, but the wastewater is going up. So, that means we're capturing more wastewater than we did before. We looked at, and Gene will get into some of the specifics, putting a package plant at the existing site. The concern that we had is based upon our current flow rates, a package plant, maximum we could put down at the existing plant site would be about 200,000 gallon expansion. And again, based upon current flows, it would give us about eight years before we'd be back into the same situation of planning and designing another plant. And from a financial perspective, that just didn't seem to make sense to be a successive process of constellation of bombs. And so, we look back at the site that was bought back in 2000, I think, Doc, probably better, I think, the city back around 2000, which is about 26, 27 acres of land, west side of town, actually had plans designed for, was it a half million or many gallons? A women's gallon. And began looking at splitting up and putting the plant on the west side and capturing all the wastewater from the west side and processing it through the new plant, and then the east side would be handled by the existing plant. Now, long-term, because of the amount of property that was brought, at some point, all the wastewater from the city would probably end up going to the plant on the west side. And the talk about tonight, West Bastrop Village, that was a municipal utility district that the council approved 2002, 2003. And for the last several years, that project has remained dormant, and they have now resurrected that property, are in the process of submitting preliminary plans, securing home builders to commence construction hopefully by, or it's the latter part of 2016. And when we took into account the full buildup of that facility, we felt the need to relook at what size plant we needed to construct to accommodate that, and of course, as we'll get into later here tonight, their pro share of the cost of the facilities needed to service their project. And so, that's kind of a brief introduction, and from that, Gene has been looking at all the areas to the west, potential land uses, potential development, and what we need to look at, and with that, Gene, I'll turn over to you.
We'll talk about wastewater first. Thank you, Councilman, for letting me come and talk to you. As Mike indicated several months ago, we were authorized to do a wastewater study for the city of Bastrop on the west end of the river, one side of the river. What you see up here was first charted as a wastewater CCN from the city of Bastrop. It's quite large. I'll give you some perspective.
Gene, do you think you could use a mailbox?
Is that working? Hello?
There's a truck. Truck on the same. Does it come off? Here it is.
Is that what it is?
Okay.
To give you some perspective of where we're at, I'm sorry, I'm hiding, here, Mike over here, here's highway 71, Tahitian Village Drive would be right here. So, we go towards Smithville some distance. This is highway 95, projecting up through here, so we go up near, within a mile or so excess range. Go on, and then here's the river. Highway 71 towards the west. We go, this is FM 20, and 21 would be right here. So, it's a quite extensive CCN. Once again, the CCN acronym is Certificate of Convenience and Necessity. We fought at great odds with the city of, with L.C.R.A. and also La Cooa to receive this area about 10 or 12 years ago. So, we're, through TCQ, we're allowed to be the service provider of wastewater in this area. So, TCQ is our provider or our regulator for wastewater for the city of Bastrop and other cities. So, as Mike has indicated, we're looking to the area to the west of the river.
We got a little microphone back there.
We're looking to the area west of the river. So, once again, this is the river, and we have identified. So, we've identified each parcel of land within that CCN area west of the river and have associated it with a demand as far as wastewater by zoning. The red indicates commercial areas along the major roadways, the green is just residential areas, and to give you some perspective of where we're at, Bastrop Village, or West Bastrop Village is right here. East Bastrop Village is on the east side of 20, and Hunter's Crossing is right here. As Mike indicated, we, the city of Bastrop has two wastewater treatment plants, and they have a combined capacity of 1.4 million gallons per day. 75% of it is a little bit over a million, it's 1.5 million, 50,000 gallons per day. And right now, for the months, and I'll make sure I don't misread this, the month of September, we were at 878, 878,000 gallons a day. October at 9... October at nine sixty-three, thousand gallons a day. In November, we were at nine hundred forty-five thousand gallons a day. Keep in mind that this does have wet weather in it, so we do have some I and I associated with this. Also, I'd like to point out to you that about fifty percent of the flow presently comes from the west side of the river. In addition to that, for you to understand, Tahitian Village, which is Bastrop County WCIB number two, is contracted with the city for two hundred thousand gallons per day. And right now, that's about eighty-five thousand gallons a day. So we do have a contract for a part of our ultimate wastewater capacity. The, as I indicated, West Bastrop Village has been talking to us, and is this where you want to give out the...
Well, let me, yeah, let me say, say, I think they come into it, and I'll start walking through this. I think I'm going to need that mic. I'm going to hand you a draft here, what I call deal points. And I think what's important for the council to keep in mind, if Bastrop West, West Bastrop Village was not in place, or was not coming on, we would be looking at building a plant about the size of one million gallons. But with them coming on, and the impact that they'll have over the next ten to twelve years, we're going to be looking at about a one point five million gallon plant. And that changes your costs significantly. So, and I want to say for the record, I don't believe the developers here, but they have not opined on these deal points, and they wanted me to make sure that the council understood that they had just received those this afternoon. And as noted at the top, this is our, our first blush at trying to come up with what we will call a wholesale wastewater agreement. When the city approved the creation of West Bastrop Village as a municipal utility district, as part of the approval process was that they were to enter into a wholesale wastewater agreement. That was part of the precedent that was required for being approved. Now, state law does allow them the opportunity to decertify, and if they chose to decertify, when I mean by decertify, they would be decertifying out of our CCN, then they would have to come up with their own wastewater system. And I'm not saying that's not possible, but from the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality standpoint, their preference is that we look for regional systems and not individual systems, just kind of scattered all over. So what we have at least kind of put together here is the first bullet point, the city of Bastrop, well, West Bastrop Village, an initial point of connection for the West Bastrop Village wastewater transmission main to obtain temporary interim wastewater service, a national interim service, from the city's existing wastewater system by constructing the necessary infrastructure to connect at the southwest corner of Hunter's Crossing subdivision, as illustrated in exhibit A. Gene, I showed what that connection point is, and there's a map in the back right there that shows you as well. Bullet point number two, this is predicated upon what they have projected their buildup scheduled to be, so this is based upon their schedule, not ours. The total capacity and/or the number of LUEs for the initial interim service that WBB will be allowed to connect and deliver wastewater produced by the WBB mud. At the connection point, at the southwest corner of Hunter's Crossing subdivision, will be as follows: year one, thirty-six, year two, thirty-six, year three, thirty-six, year four, thirty-six, and year five, thirty-six. A maximum total LUEs for temporary service is set at a hundred and eighty LUEs. During this interim phase of wastewater treatment, each month during the first five years, West Bastrop Village shall pay an initial wastewater treatment charge, which payment will cover, for example, the city's expenses for operation and maintenance, administration, and wastewater treatment costs attributed to the wastewater treatment service provided to the city by WBB. For example, the initial rate, which is... Okay. Okay. This subject to per the city code will be the rate will equal the number of connections planted in the mud times the city's standard residential customer rate times one point two factor. Now, the in-city customers do not subsidize on corporate limited customer service. Each LU in the WBB mud will equate to a three-quarter inch meter, which will be calculated equal to flow of two hundred and fifty gallons per day, and no metering of the wastewater cost will be done. Now, we didn't pull that two hundred and fifty gallons out of the sky. That was based upon extensive analysis that Gene did during his analysis of our flow rates, and on average, that's what a household with a three-quarter inch meter will deliver into the sewer system. Connection to the city's wastewater system at southwest corner of Hunter's Crossing will be at the cost of the developer. The city will build West Bastrop Village mud directly for the initial service. Value per LU shall begin ninety days after each spot planted is recorded by the city. Why are we saying that? Well, we're not providing the water. We don't know when they're going to be doing the connections, and rather than be struck with the administration of trying to keep track, we're just saying, once it's planted at nine days, we're going to start charging you service now. I recognize this is the first proposal, but we're trying to keep the administration part from the city's perspective to a minimum. Regarding wastewater rates in effect at that time planted and adjusted annually or otherwise as stated in the code, any future commercial users in West Bastrop Villages will be billed per AWA LU conversion scan. What we mean there is that a portion of the mud has an area for commercial development. That commercial development may call, or if I like to say interesting subject, I don't know. That's right, I sure do. We have the complex here now.
Mike, can I, can I, can I take one more?
Yes. Recording, you're cutting it.
I lost my form, so it's okay. Can I just take a motion to the chair?
Please do.
Make a motion to the chair. All those things. I thank you very much.
How do you all recover?
Can I ask him a question?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. J.C., J.C., cover. J.C., how about you ask that question? What's an LU? That's a living unit equivalent, and it's based upon your meter size, and the reason that we're saying it's commercial will be converted because the bigger the meter, the bigger the impact, the more water being used, the more water that's going to be delivered into the wastewater system, and the American Water Works Association has a universally accepted standard of charge, so there's no dispute. This is, we're trying to keep national standards as how we want this. This is what we're presently estimating the time for constructing and permitting of the west wastewater treatment plant. This is an estimated time for the city's construction of a new wastewater treatment plant, estimate only. Should the timeline vary for any reason, then the initial interim service phase of service may be extended beyond the time period noted above to meet the service needs of WBB mud at the city's sole discretion and option. This hard to predict out beyond five years. October two thousand fifteen, that day that's passed, and we were awaiting, we get received a determination from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality as to which regulations TCQ will require the city to use to construct a new wastewater treatment plant. If you recall, I mentioned earlier that the city had previously designed a plant but never built it. We did get a permit for it. And what TCQ ruled was, if we built a one million gallon plant, we would build under the new regulation, old regulations, but if we build under, if we build a one point five, we're going to be subject to the new regulations, which is going to add additional cost to the construction of the plant. And we have received that instructions, that that was a key for us being able to put the rest of this together. We're commencing a rate and impact study. Our impact fees are going to be altered significantly, as well as our rate structure. And extensive discussions with our financial advisor, what is envisioned here, you'll see gaps in time to allow some stair stepping, so as to gradually adjust our rates accordingly, so that we don't do have a sticker show. December, the city to identify and finalize the wastewater collection mains routes from the mud to the new west wastewater treatment plant, and you'll, we'll show those in a minute. December two thousand fifteen, we will begin working to obtain easements of wastewater lines from West Bastrop Village mud to the wastewater treatment plant. That's to give us an idea of where we may see some problems. Some people may be very welcome to have wastewater available and not have to worry about a subject tank, and it's been my experience, in many cases, that's a welcome, and people are very welcome to give you an easement in exchange for a connection. January one, the city will begin to do final design work on the west Bastrop number three plant to provide the capacity for twelve hundred LU for West Bastrop mud as fully constructed, as well as the needs of the city, of course. On or before January fifteenth, this is very important, because we really struggled with this, because if we start a design for a one point five million gallon plant, and we get all the way down to the bidding, and they decide they want to pull out, that means we built an oversized plant and will not have flows sufficient to, for that plant to operate, so that would force us to have to go back and redesign back to a million gallon plant, and that could be putting, pushing us up against those percentages that I said, putting us in jeopardy of being in violation.
When you said, Dave, you talked about this last week.
Yes. So I thought it was very important upfront, you're either going to commit or you're not going to commit, because we don't have the luxury of going and or bearing the expense of designing a one point five million gallon plant, getting up to the point to bidding it, and they say, well, we're going to decertify and put a package plant out, we think we can do it cheaper. That's going to be a big expense to the city.
My question was, if that does happen, you mentioned earlier about the one point five million dollar cost versus the one million dollar cost, and we have the old cost, would we go back to the old cost, or is this a whole ballgame?
We would go back to the one, we would redo, we would go back to the one million gallon plant, because based upon the work Gene has done, our demands, as I stated earlier, but for Bastrop, what, the west Bastrop Villages, we would only, the city only need a one million gallon plant to handle the increased flows that we're seeing from the west and the growth in the west.
Under the cheaper per gallon cost.
Under the cheaper per gallon cost.
Yes, okay.
So the developer, on or before January fifteenth, and these times are, to put this together here, there's a little slippage, but not a lot. The developer will require to pose acceptable, acceptable financial assurance in an amount shown by an engineer and estimate to cover the developer's core rate of share of the development cost of the wastewater treatment plant and related infrastructure cost, which will be utilized by the city in the event that the developer does not proceed with the project. The city and the developer will true up the estimated versus the actual during the project benefits. Result of the plant true up, the cost of less, they'll get some back, but failure to pose fiscal assurance will result, and we'll get into that more, the penalties. So in essence, what we're saying is, if we get up to that one point five million and they back out, we're going to call on that financial performance to cover the cost we've incurred for designing one point five, plus the cost of having to go back and downsize, and any other costs we may have incurred because we've gone this far out, and now we're having to backtrack.
They back up a little bit, the reason, the reason this is, is a little complicated because they're mud.
Right.
If they weren't mud, we wouldn't have to be, we wouldn't have any options at all with that impact.
That's right, and that's why I'm saying we're going to be renewing our impact fees, because if you were inside the city limits and you were connecting, you would be paying an impact fee, which they're not paying an impact fee, they're paying a core rate of share for their reserve capacity that's related to their cost.
So when will they receive these deal points?
I know we... They got it this afternoon.
Oh, they got it this afternoon, okay.
Not too many nights, I've had too much sleep the last three weeks. This has been a very worrisome project because of the financial exposure that we're, I'm making sure, the most important thing to me is, I know we've got to build a new wastewater plant, I just don't want the city to be exposed to have that fallout.
Mike, can I encourage something? Doc asked the question, any of you said one million dollar plant versus one point five million dollars?
No.
It's one, no, it's bad.
One M G D versus one point five M G D.
Okay. So we haven't talked about the price again, you understand that?
Right, we have not, had to, I can give you, a ballpark range, probably for the million gallons, plus the transmission mains, if it was just the city, I would say it's going to be in the range of eleven to twelve million dollars, just the city. And if we go up to the one point five, we're probably looking at thirteen to fourteen. So you can see, there's a big financial risk to the city we would be incurring and for them to pull out. And we will get those, and these will be based upon actual engineers' estimates, and the council will see the difference in those numbers before we go find them. I just got to get the ball rolling, because they are putting me under a lot of pressure, because they want to start connecting to our wastewater system by December of this upcoming year.
But you would, you would also give us your reasons, when you described a very small jump for fifty percent more wastewater, so you would explain all that to us at some point, correct?
Yes, and I could be an error, I'm just been using some very, very preliminary figures. I, I'm sure you're going to see the difference between the one and the one point five is going to be more than probably what I said. Also, keep in mind, if you, if you drop your plant down to one million gallons, then your tran, your collect remains are... tran, your collect remains are going to become smaller because you're not going to be having that level of flow. But if we're going to be getting that level of flow, then your cluster mains are going to be bigger in size. So there's a lot of components that all have to fit together.
So this is just with West Past Rock Village? I mean, so this is what, what, I mean, I know we haven't gotten to talk about other development because we're, this is the main concern now, but what, yeah, I'm sorry. But, I mean, like to the east, if there's going to be a development there or is-
We are going to notify them, uh, of what we're doing and provide them the opportunity. But keep in mind, if they want to come in and say do a subdivision, then they wouldn't, they're, they're going to be a customer of the city, a, a retail customer. And that would be a residential retail customer versus a wholesale customer because they're a mud. And as a result, rather than paying an upfront cost, they pay, as we're getting back into the living unit equivalents or the meter size, they would be paying an impact fee plus their normal wastewater rate. Because of the timeframe, our, our goal is to try to get the plans and specifications, uh, submitted to TCEQ by July two thousand sixteen. TCEQ could take up to six months to approve plans and specifications. So we're projecting receiving final approval from the plans in December. But we would wait at least five or six months before we go off the bid. These are these gaps that I'm talking about. Uh, but honor before May first, uh, West Past Rock Village will provide any adjustments in posted financial assurance to cover any change in the engineering cost estimate, which must be in a form of amount acceptable to the city and the city's financial advisor for the mud's pro-rata share of the mud's share of the new wastewater treatment plant number three and for the associated wastewater interceptors from the development to the West. Uh, wastewater plant number three, ask for exhibits A and B. Failure to pay the financial fiscal assurance will implicate the city to seek fiscal damages related to its reliance on mud for participation in the project. This is the critical point, we're going off the bids and they pull out. And that's why I say there's going to be a penalty and, and so I've pretty much gone over that video. Uh, and at the same time, we will be in the bond issuance phase for paying for our portion. Uh, June, um, West Past Rock Village will be required to remit its pro-rata share, uh, to the city. These are actual dollars. These are not bonds, uh, these are not letters of credit. We're talking actual cash will be required to be deposited to the city prior to the council in July awarding the bid for the project. And it will be put in a separate segregated account so that as we draw down the payment, let's just say for points of discussion, uh, seventy-five percent is city and twenty-five percent is West Past Rock Village. We will get, because of the length of the project, we'll get payout occasions from the, the contractor. When we get those in, seventy-five percent will come from the city, twenty-five percent will come from the cash that we have in the escrow account of West Past Rock Village. Uh, it is anticipated about a year and a half to construct the new plant and, uh, uh, wait, uh, and, and clutter mains. So after your award in July, it would be January of two thousand nineteen, uh, before the construction would be completed. And it takes about three to four months once a plant is constructed to bring it into what we call an operational phase. Um, there are certain things that have to happen. Uh, we have to create certain bacteria growth to help treat the wastewater and such. And so, uh, just because it's built doesn't mean the day that it's completed, it's automatically operation. It takes a few months. Uh, exhibit A, the construction point for the interface showing the preliminary route we constructed, uh, for the long-term connection to and the service from wastewater plant with a pro-rata cost made determined. Exhibit B is a preliminary route of the interceptors along the boundary three oh four and to After we've commenced and we've moved into the operation of the new plant, then we will enter into a long-term wholesale wastewater agreement, uh, to Past Rock, West Past Rock Village. Uh, the following facilities must be designed and constructed in order to install, uh, the city of Past Rock provides wholesale water service, wastewater service, excuse me, to West Past Rock Village. A clusterized one point five MGD plant, and I'm just telling the location, that's shown on your exhibit. Two, um, there are still some factors we're dealing with, but a minimum of a certain-sized wastewater collector main commencing at the point where the collector main is constructed from the wastewater treatment plant property line extending so many feet east to the eastern boundary of state highway three oh four, shown on as point A on exhibit B, running to the western side of state three oh four, point B as shown on exhibit B, a minimum of a sideline that will be determined, uh, running from wastewater collector main at point B on the western side, running along norling long highway three oh four to point C as shown on exhibit B. Then, a minimum of a certain-sized wastewater collector main commencing at point C on the western side of state three oh four, running westernly, ending at the point connection to West Past Rock Village collector identified as point E as shown on exhibit A. Past Rock shall design and construct costs to be designed, uh, wastewater plant and related wastewater collection and infrastructure are above. Best, Past Rock shall use best reasonable efforts to initiate and complete construction. And, uh, we still have, have to plug in the months for this. And, uh, West Past Rock Village will be providing an opportunity to have this engineer review the plans. We'll be given fifteen business days to review the plan. I'm just going to cap some of these. The total amount of, of West Past Rock Village to complete the plant, we're going to give them the engineer's cost estimate, but at the project bid, they're going to have to true it up. Past Rock is all the project amount and what I just told you earlier, segregated accounts. Honor will, honor before five days prior to the council going off the bids, um, they, we will provide them written application of the proposed release of bid package and the updated engineering cost. Within five days prior to the city's proposed date for the council's award of the bid, uh, West Past Rock shall remit to the city its pro-rata share because we'll know at that time what the cost will be. And if they don't, then again, there'll be a penalty, but we will be able to award the bidding. Parties agree to acknowledge that if the bid's received for the project and the bid is awarded, uh, by the city council, the project is within twenty-five percent of the previously identified engineer's cost, construction cost estimate, the project shall go full. Parties agree that they shall do a true up at the end of the project and if there's a reimbursement to be back from them out of their segregated account, it will be given back to them or if they owe us additional funds, uh, they will have to pay the city. Upon completion of constructing the wholesale wastewater facility and the time Past Rock has acted upon, they accept the wholesale wastewater as a city facility, will operate and maintain the wholesale wastewater facilities. And upon completion of the wastewater facilities, Past Rock and West Rock will meet to do a true up, as I said, and will provide them any overages. They will provide city overages of their, uh, uh, surplus left, we'll return that back. Um, when the initial interim service camps, um, uh, West Past Rock will be transitioned to the new wastewater plant. Honor before the first of each month of service, city will provide the city with a number of active resident connections and a number of active commercial account, uh, commercial education and other connections and the estimated number coming on connection. We're not going to change it, but at least gives us an idea of what their growth rate is doing. Each month, the city will, West Past Rock, the city will bill, West Past Rock Village directly based upon rate, gas bills, which was the same rate, number of connections planted and the standard rate plus one point two. That's to cover our overhead demonstration. We're calling for a twenty-year agreement and since they're paying their pro-rata share upfront, uh, they of course would not be subject to impact fees because they'll be, they will be the retail provider within side of the mud. City will agree to attempt to negotiate with other developers who might benefit for oversizing to see if they wish to participate. Exhibit B, uh, is, shows you the location of where the, the site the city bought back in two thousand. And keep in mind, the size of these lines will change. For example, uh, the city may determine the line coming out of the wastewater plant up to point A should be larger than when we cross over because eventually there may be wastewater coming down this way from other development that we would, would have picked up or developed over here. There could be a line going somewhere else. And then from B to C will be another side of the line and then from C, on the next page, you'll see on C is where it turns and goes westwardly. And D is, the red line is the interim connection and then the D point is where it becomes a permanent connection.
What's the string here to C?
That is, uh, Conners Crossing and that's outfitter, uh-
Where the L lines at?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's drainage.
Okay.
Yeah.
The city pool on that.
Okay.
Yes. So that's a lot of information in a, in a short period of time. I, I can tie it with lumber and that and put it together. But, um, they are, they are really wanting to have their houses, um, on the ground starting in December of two thousand sixteen. So they are really putting the pressure on me to come up with something and I realize I'm not, it'll be on my city manager's report, uh, Tuesday night to solicit input back from you. I don't, I know I hit you with a lot of information. I would encourage you to give me a call. Um, I did look at several other cities who have entered into, um, wholesale wastewater agreements. Uh, everyone charged more to a mud as an outside customer versus inside, so that one point two factor is not something that should come as alarm to them. Uh, being treated as wholesale customer has its own impact, paying its upfront costs. Uh, we're, we're not here to subsidize their growth.
My, if, uh, let me test the council on you. I know you're going to put this on your, your city manager's report, but why don't we post it as an agenda item? And then if you get some kind of, I'm just thinking about the urgency of this thing and your, your, your January deadline. If they happen to agree or have a little tweak or something, uh, and, and the council feels competent to make a decision that night, fine, and if not, we're no worse off.
Right.
Uh, so, I mean, does that make sense? Kind of nods around the table? I mean, or should, should we just?
How long do they have to respond when they receive this application?
I'm going to give them a couple of weeks. I mean, I, I mean, these can slide for about a month or two, but not much more than that. I mean, we're going to be posture having to make a decision in January. I mean, or we're not, we, we won't be able to, because the, the unknown factor here is, is if we get an accelerated growth inside the city on the west side, that's going to impact the SLUEs that would be available. If we run into some problems, like with TCEQ, they want this or that, and so it's a nine month process instead of a six month process, we may not have the availability to give them any more LUEs because of development that hit the city. So we're, we're balancing a lot of balls here to try to keep it moving, but at the same time, reach, uh, accommodate their timeframe so that they can get their project off and running. And at the end of the day, the whole financial exposure will lie across for the city.
Yeah, and given your answer to Kelly's question, maybe it's better to just wait until January, but-
Well, I, I would like, love starting to get feedback.
I mean, but, but I'm saying, if, to make, to be able to make a decision, we can give you feedback either way.
But I, I'm not expecting a decision by Tuesday night, no way.
You don't think though? Okay, forget it. We'll do it under your, forget my idea. The other question is, we, uh, just want to make it clear, this is a business that we run and unfortunately, or fortunately, it's a monopoly. And we're just going to have to charge whatever we have to charge to get people's sewer treated down the river. So it's not like we're going to be raising taxes or anything. We're going to have to make this work. And we talked about sticker shop, but sticker shop is, you, the worst sticker shop is I can't get a car at all at any price and we don't have that option here. We got to provide service services.
And that's why, you, if you start spending those timeframes and recognize that the plant will not become operational until sometime two thousand nineteen, that gives us about three, three and a half years to do some graduated adjustments in our rates while this is all going on because we can stagger the issuance of our bonds to accommodate our construction schedule and maintain the financial integrity of our wastewater fund because we're considered an enterprise fund and the mayor's absolutely correct, we should run like a business. And, and thirdly, because we run like a business, they should pay their fair share and we shouldn't be subsidizing their-
But the graduating thing sounds great.
Three things real quick. One thing is that this is all the base and I, I have the year of the law. The man reported the dog paying for several months, CHM Hill. And according to that report, it'll be hitting seven, three, five seconds, this is two thousand eighteen. That's the first point. The second point I was going to make is that the property that y'all bought ten or twelve, fifteen years ago is allocated for six to eight million gallons of treatment. So we're going to, it's a big site and a lot of water, so the trucks that are going to come up three or four are going to be big.
And we're not building, we're not, we're not planning those pipes for a one point five million. Gee makes a good point. We're, we're planning on those pipe because it's not the cost of the, it's not the cost of the pipe that's driving the cost, it's the cost of the, the digging in. And some little lines are going to be as much as eighteen to twenty foot deep. So we want to make sure that we properly oversize it to accommodate future growth so we're not out there paralleling a pipe eighteen foot because that's going to be expensive another ten years now.
So someday, some city manager and mayor come in to see you and me at the nursing home and say, hey, thanks for putting in those big old pipes.
That's right. And the last point was, um, the last thing I can say is if we pull the water from the lakes west side off of the existing plant, by those projections, that subject to change. This existing plant, right? If, if we pull everything off west of the river to the new plant, this plant should last to two thousand thirty-five.
At the beginning of your explanation, you said something about being-
Sounds like a great question.
Um, at, at the beginning of your explanation, you said something about being previously issued bonds and set some money aside for this. How much?
A hundred thousand I want to set aside for the work that Gene's been doing.
Okay, not for this?
Not for this, for this, to give us the types, capacity and sizing and flows and things, to give us the data to base this on. And, and, and that's why I'm saying, based upon the work that Gene has been doing over the last several months, we, we know that to meet our growth, based upon the CHM Hill study and what we're seeing happening at the wastewater plant, a one million gallon plant will meet our needs for the next fifteen years for sure.
So they can still keep the whatever we're going with.
One million.
And then the other one, I pointed out, our permit for the one million west of the expires the fall of two thousand nineteen. And they said that's the last time to renew it, so we don't build it. It's long.
That's right. And, uh, if we're not operational, we, we'll have to renew that permit before we, if we're not out, if we're halfway through the construction, then, and we're not operational, we're going to be in a permit renewal under new regulations. So there's a, a lot of factors driving that.
So do we have some, a little bit of budget time to make sure we get that deadline?
If all of you stay pretty much on the schedule.
But we better, better put red down somewhere.
That's right.
I, I was going to say, you know, some- I, I was going to say, you know, sometime, I think, uh, Kay and I were the only ones on the council, president council. You know, we talked about going to build, and that was 10 million dollar project or something at one point, and we got really just, it just seemed a lot overwhelming. But, I mean, you've come along, correct, we've been talking about this ever since, uh, you've been talking to us about this, this year, and it's, you've kind of raised the, the level of the pot, so we're not falling to death, you know, I think we're adjusting to it. Sounds like to me at least, the timing is good. Uh, you've got, you've laid out something that's going to work and we're really making some progress for this, for this community. I, I think the timing is, uh, you know, I never dreamed a few years ago, Kay, that we would be feeling quite discomfortable when we got to it. I feel pretty good at this point, so.
Well, I'll tell you one thing that we did change is, is early on, we, we just said the package plant that we discussed five or six years ago is not cost effective because for some reason the cost of package plant or that timeframe has increased substantially. And a projected cost of a 400,000 gallon, uh, package plant is over 2 million dollars. And that doesn't buy us much time, doesn't buy us much time at all. And we're right back into the financial markets, and that's what starts affecting your bond rating when you're constantly running back to the financial market because it, it doesn't demonstrate that you're, you're planning or, or thinking ahead of what your needs are and setting your rates accordingly.
Well, that, uh, everybody involved down the road has that 2019 date, whatever it is, TCEQ way, way big on their calendars.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
Um, Mike, what, what action are you going to want from us first?
Well, I want to hear back from them, and then, um, at first meeting in January, um, we're going to have to start, I mean, contact me individually or email me your thoughts, I want to incorporate them in there. But either by the first or second council meeting in January, we're going to have to come at least to, we can't write a contract in, in a 45-day timeframe. So we're going to have to basically turn this deal point into a letter of understanding, and we're going to need to be posh to do that by at least the second council meeting in January if we're going to stay pretty much on the schedule. We start moving in the February mark, then we're going to push some things out.
So are you going to need us to contact her or just to give you to go ahead?
What I'm asking would be to approve a letter of understanding, which this will be converted into, what did I say? Taking this and turning it into a letter of understanding, which will be the basis on which we'll write the contract, which will take about three or four months. But that will give the trigger that the parties understand what they're getting into, what's required of them. I mean, it needs, it needs some brushing and tuning up, but this is beginning to, I had to formulate something, and this is the, at least the footprint for what we're looking at, conceptually how we're approaching this, uh, but now we've got to fine tune it, and once you sign it, then we're going to be moving forward. Now, we do have money both through our impact fees and through settlement I did with Forestar to cover some of our costs, like get Gene started in the design of the plant before we have to issue bonds. Because I want to get our rate study done and things of that nature. So we, you're, you're, like I said, Mike, you're recommending the debt tax college for engineering, where's that money coming from? Well, we've been collecting impact fees and we were in a very kind of awkward agreement with Forestar, and I got about 700,000 dollar settlement payment that had been put back and not touched. And so, uh, we, uh, we at least have the money to commence covering the engineering and design and the, any legal or other services that may be required.
You can trust 700,000 dollars?
Well, it, it needs, uh, it's not cheap, the designing, plants and pots. I mean, the, the plants are pretty, and it's really, the more detailed the plant, the more, the easier you'll get to a TCEQ. I think we're, I think we're ready, let's hear your different two adjournments, workshop session, reconvene and open session. And, um, is there any action that we can tell?
Well, how bad did I shock you?
Uh, with the second?
How bad did I shock you all?
With, with going 70 minutes on this.
Luminous one here.
I think we've been, you've been, you've been raising the temperature a little bit as we go along.
Uh, I bet.
Uh, we don't have any action, uh, anybody got anything from Mike terms of future questions? Here, Adam, down here.
Uh, oh, return, yeah, I'm hoping for a terminal, sorry, I struck you. So in the south of the future.
There's, uh, we've called the rock. How about, like, screaming?
That's a feature of the business.
I'll call, I'll call. Chip, yes, yellow.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Alex.
Jackson.
Thank you.
Richard. Good people, Mike, thank you.